All right, everyone, we would like to call to order the May 22, 2019 City Council meeting at 7:02 or so, and the first thing we'll do is stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, justice, and...
Our first item of business will be the consent agenda. Would someone make a motion, please?
Motion approved, consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. The next thing will be the Planning Commission report, including some billboard discussion. So, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council. We did meet last week, Wednesday, the 15th. I'll put my glasses on. And tonight, there isn't anything that you guys have to approve, or this is just informational at this time. Kind of a little background, I believe it was last August, Billboard Company came in to put in another billboard, and we had to grant the IUP because of the way the ordinance is. The past council kind of looked at, well, back up a minute, there's, right now, the IUPs are 20 years, and there's 20-some, 22 of them are set to expire in 2020, and two in 2022. So, the last council kind of asked, is this the way we want to go? And they decided to put a moratorium on it, and I believe that went into effect October. So, we need to do a study to determine, because of the moratorium, and I believe that has to be done within the year. As I stated, Columbus right now has 36 billboards, 28 are with an IUP, and eight are with a cup. And of course, the cups, they're here forever. And because of the amount set to expire, we're going to do the study. Ben, who's not here right now, he put together a table, and also a really nice map, that showed us kind of every billboard, and it kind of is eye-opening to me to see how many there are along the freeway. The table he put together compared us to Blaine, Burnsville, Lakeville, and it kind of looked at comparing us to them, the zoning districts, setbacks, design standards, and that, and how we compared with them, and something for us to look at. The other thing was with dynamic signs, the electronic billboards being real popular right now, looking at those. And we have one, and we have very little in our ordinance to set standards for them. So, he, next time, is going to present us at our next meeting, a little more information on other cities and how they have standards for their dynamic ones. And some of that would be light monitoring, and function control, that if the light malfunctions, it shuts off, and different things, more than just, I believe ours right now says, the message can't change, it's got to be static for eight seconds. And that's pretty much all ours says. So, he's going to compile more of that and get that back to us, because we're still in the study phase. There's quite a bit to talk about. Ben also put together about 10 questions that we looked at, and a few of them I'll just kind of discuss, and really, the biggest question we asked was, do we feel billboards are still something we want along our freeways and in our community? And we did say yes. One of the other questions was based on our spacing, are we happy with that, and the heights, and the dimensions, and that. And the spacing, there was some difference of opinions, so that, I think, still is an area that could be looked at. Right now, ours, or the static boards are 750 feet for the spacing distance, and then the dynamic boards are 3750 in a 360-degree rotational, so that means across the freeway or whatever else. We talked about the zoning districts, and is there any zoning district that we want to exclude it? And now, with city, with Columbus being a city, we can have billboards on the entrance and exit ramps, and we kind of did as a consensus here that we don't feel we'd like to see billboards up at that intersection. And some of it's got to do with height adjustments, and the way the land lays, and how high they'd have to be. And the other thing is, that's kind of some of our prime real estate right now, and that was another point, was, is there any zoning district that we want to keep them out? And we did kind of talk that the commercial area up there, we'd like to keep them out of. That was our recommendation. Again, tonight, there is no action needed from the council, this is just informational. Another question was on the length of the IUP. The existing ones, like I said, are 20. We kind of didn't really come up with, yeah, this is good, that's good. Part of it was going to, excuse me, leave it on you guys, but we did come up that, right now, we'll say five years. Again, I'm sure some of this is going to be discussed more and changed, probably. Let's see, we talked about that. One of the items Mayor Priner actually brought up, and this has got to do more with the Steiner, or the standards and that, is to see Columbus City on the billboard. And if we change the standards for the design type and start looking at maybe having stone veneer or anything else, or not, even just on the metal ones, that we start having part of our standard that Columbus City is put on them, and many communities are doing that. Next week, Ben will bring back some more information, kind of a summary of what we discussed, and then a little more information on different standards for the dynamic signs. And I'm sure, as a group, we'll discuss more. The last council, the last Planning Commission, there was only three of us there, so it would be good to have more of a discussion with five people there and maybe get a little more That's about all we discussed. If you guys have some information you want me to bring back, or direction, questions?
I have a question. So, this will be brought up next week, and this, I mean, it'll be a big chunk of your evening, do you think?
In two weeks, next week, there wouldn't be a planning...
Well, next week is the fifth.
Just so everybody knows, fifth week, we don't have Planning Commission. Planning Commission billboards will be discussed, but they'll also start the discussion about mixed use, and the design standards that we talked about for the northeast and northwest areas for housing.
So, we'll still have an hour or so to hash on it?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, a lot of us were there, and it was a good...
Yeah.
It was a good meeting, and so we'll continue on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
The next, we're down to number eight already. And it's public open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at public open forum? Come on up to the front, if you would. You can sit in the hot seat and put your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, they have it, it's in the additions.
My name's Bill Sieben, S.I.E.B., as in Bravo, E.N. I'm at 9623 192nd Avenue, Northeast, in Columbus Township. So, I guess what I would like to just bring up...
Yep, go ahead, tell us what...
...try to start a conversation about, I'm talking to the building department, and not wanting to put words in his mouth, but he suggested I come talk to you folks...
Yep.
...about residential pool fencing.
Yeah.
Currently, you need a fence of five feet tall. Building department seemed to also agree that that rule is perhaps somewhat outdated, given the current technology that's out there right now with horizontal fencing, or what's a weight-bearing fence, or, I'm sorry, pool cover.
Yeah.
So, there's a, in organizations, if you're familiar with ASME, or ISO, or OSHA, there's one that's called ASTM, that kind of handles this area of the industry. They have certain certifications in order for a pool cover to be referred to as a pool safety cover. Pool safety covers, I can't remember the exact weight, it's something in the 400s or 700 pounds, they have to be able to hold, some can hold 4,000 pounds. What I would prefer to do, just to speak candidly, is to have one of these covers. These covers are between $8,000 and $12,000. There's a keypad, you need a code and a key, they cover the whole pool, and they lock in place. You open them up, and the benefit here is, they're safer than a fence, you can't crawl over it, you can't crawl under it or through it. I don't have to pay for the fences, the fence is $40 a linear foot, so I'm talking with a 20 by 40 pool, you're at $6,500 for a fence, pretty quickly. That's just skirting the outside of the pool. And then, I'm on 50 acres, so then that kind of feels like I'm getting away from why I'm on 50 acres, but also, I have found that pools are ridiculously expensive, and I can't actually afford to put a pool together with a gathering space at the same time, so at some point, I'd like to have a place for, you know, picnic table, maybe a fire pit, barbecue, kind of a area, which would require me to pull, rip up this fence that I just put in a year or two earlier, so I can extend it and try and match it to this new area. In talking with insurance companies, and insurance companies don't care if I have a fence at all, they want this locking pool cover, which comes standard on a lot of pool kits right now, because simply you can drive a one-ton truck across the top of them. Nobody can get in there without a lock and key. The homeowner is incented to use this. Now, a homeowner needs to make sure that the gates lock, every single gate's locked anyways, but for the homeowners, these new pool covers also have a savings environmental impact and cost to operate your pool. So, most pools come with heaters now, they require chemicals, there's evaporation, and keeping your pool cover closed when you're not using it keeps the dirt, the debris, the evaporation, reduces chemical usage and things like this. So, homeowners have an incentive to make sure that cover is closed, otherwise, it's kind of, with the fence idea, they're not as secure, and it relies on the homeowner to make sure that every gate's locked at all times.
Yeah.
So, I am just here to try and start a conversation, if it's possible, to add to the language, that residential pools could have a fence, or perhaps one of these certified safety covers.
Uh-huh. Just for own information, so does it roll, is it fabric that rolls up at one end, or what?
It's a type of fabric, I'm not familiar with fabric, some kind of a canvas-type thing. The one I'm looking at, it's on a track, it's built into the walls of the pool itself, so it rolls back and retracts into the edge of the pool, and then with the button, it pulls itself back all the way to the end and locks itself in place.
Yeah. And so, what you're asking is, if we would consider adding that to swimming pool, into the swimming pool ordinance?
Yes, into the language requiring a fence.
Is that a state law, requiring a fence around a pool? Phil?
It's coming from our, from the zoning code.
Yeah, so I think you would have discretion to look at an equivalency, but if it's under zoning, it would either have to be specifically varied by a variance application, or changed by a code amendment.
All right. So, when are you building the pool?
It kind of comes down to how we proceed here, to be honest, because I'm getting the, if I get a pool, I'm getting the one with the cover for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's the safest thing, and I don't think it's going to save me, I mean, I'm not a sucker. I don't think it's going to save me $8,000 to $12,000 in energy savings, but it's a peace of mind that this is the safest thing. But, my wife and I just haven't committed to the idea of looking out our backyard and seeing a fence.
All right.
I know people have been doing it for forever.
Yeah.
But, I don't know that it's that important to us, given the fact that we already know that we will have to remove that and add to it, and try and make it match kind of down the road.
All right. So, what, we'll certainly look into it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And someone will get back to you in two weeks, three weeks, something like that?
Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, the simplest thing for him to do is, if it is coming out of the zoning code, is to make application for a variance, and go through the Planning Commission with that, and he's got a pretty decent presentation, so I don't know that it warrants a code amendment, but if you find that, generally, one of the things that warrants a code amendment is, you find one, two, three people asking for the same thing, rather than granting multiple variances you'd grant, you'd make a code amendment. But I'm not sure that, if he's willing to go through the variance process, then I'm not sure there's anything more that the council has to do with it until it comes back.
So, are you, does that sound reasonable to you?
If I fully understand it, is this, what is the...
The variance?
Sounds like, oh, in the military, we would call it a waiver, like, here's the rule, but you get a waiver. Yeah?
Yeah.
Something like this?
I would say. If you can explain your...
Good analogy.
If you can explain your, you put in the application, that you want to do something other than what's in the code, you have your reasons why, you just read them, you're going to be talking to the same people, and, no, actually, goes the Planning Commission first, and then to us.
Yeah, that's what it's supposed to say.
And if you can support your reasons, if you have good supporting reasons of why you want to do it, and who's, who it's okayed by and accepted by, insurance companies, state government, whatever, whatever.
It doesn't say three...
And then we decide if you...
Or other mechanisms.
First, the Planning Commission, then they recommend to us, either we grant you the variance, or we don't.
Okay.
So, then that doesn't have to change the whole code, but it does give you the opportunity to do what you want.
Appreciate that.
And I would have some photos and some slide presentation or something, so everybody can really understand what they're looking at...
Sure.
...as you explain it.
I'm sure my installer can do that, too. I know he has worked in several communities, and this cover's good enough for the community.
So, what would be the next step, Elizabeth?
You'd have to...
Just come in and apply?
You'd have to apply for an application, and it would be a short narrative statement that you would write, along with a site plan, and then submit the application, and it would probably take five or six weeks to process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Anyone else from the public wish to come up? And if not, then we'll move on to the engineer report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Last meeting, we talked about a change order for the Southwest Utility Project, and it said that there would be another one. So, in front of you is change order number two, and it's comprised of three items. The first item is a remobilization charge, because we have not been able to acquire the easement from the Southwest property owner where the lift station is going, and we've been working with the city attorney and the property owner's attorney, that, that'll be resolved hopefully by end of June. So, the contractor that's working out there now for us, he'll be done with the work that he can do by the end of next week, and he'll have to move out the site and come back. Both he and the directional drilling, his directional drilling subcontractor. The second item is due to a private utility conflict that exists along some of the sanitary sewer line that he's installing. When we prepare plans, we send out utility notices, and we put on the plans all the information we get back. There's one utility that did not provide any information, Fiber Optic, and he has to move the line out of the way to construct the sanitary sewer line. There's, and Elizabeth was talking to one of their reps, Mrs. Zao, that there's a chance we could get reimbursement for them, for the cost of doing this. So, we'll be working with them to do that. We'd like to process this, though, and if we get reimbursement, we can apply it back. Also, we're going to try to do this, not try, we're going to do this time and material to try to keep the cost down. This is his upper end estimate, the $10,080, for the extra crew time and labor that takes to hold the private, the fiber optic out of the way while he's doing his construction.
If I can add something, we talked to, I sent a message to the attorney for the property owners, and we've been negotiating for some time, and said, if you give us a right-of-entry, we can save this cost of remobilization, and they didn't respond. So, and the irony of it is, the cost is going to go on the project that's assessed to their client, so, I mean, in the end, they're going to pay one-third of that additional remobilization cost, and the other two-thirds will go to the epitomist plant. So, you know, we gave them a way out, and, you know, for whatever reason, they're deciding not to be responsive. So, on, I think, the 21st, we have an order for possession, we'll get the easement, they'll be able to remobilize and finish the project.
He'll still be within the timeframe that we originally had stated that they had to finish the project, it's just that he has to move off for three weeks, four weeks, and come back. That's that first number we're talking about, $16,000. And the last number was a change to the way the contractor was placing his directional drilling equipment. We had a design, so if you've been driven by there at all, they had a box, slip, slipbox on the north side. Elizabeth, maybe go to the next, next drawing, next page, if there's one more that, yeah, it's, well, maybe it's easier to talk to the aerial if you go back to the aerial. So, right here, where I'm pointing, is we had an open pit, and the contractor had, had put in place a slip rail shoring box, and we had intended to, for him to set up his directional drilling machine and push the directional drilling rods through, and then pull the pipe back. With MinDOT's constraints, we thought we had enough right-of-way here, but their fence line kind of angles back, and to get the permit, they said, no, no touching their fence, no going inside their fence line. So, it was going to cost quite a bit more to set up back further and drill all the way, but the contractor actually had a good idea in setting up on the other side of West Freeway Drive, pushing his directional drilling rod all the way through, and then pulling the casing back, and we stop it here like we were originally intended, but he had a couple hundred, 300 extra feet of directional drilling. So, he's asking for $3,500 due to that extra drilling, and it's actually about half of what it cost him, looking at the extra cost that it took him. So, what this is, this blue line from here over is our water main. We have a 20-inch casing that we pulled through by directionally drilling, and inside that 20-inch casing is a 12-inch water main. And that work has now been completed, and then, the, he has some work up in this area to finish connecting the water main yet. He has finished the sanitary sewer, which is on this side, this drawing doesn't show it, but sanitary sewer runs up this side, and then down to here, and now we have to wait until we get permission from this, the property owner down in the southwest corner, before we can drill under 35W with the sanitary sewer. Anyway, this third part of the change order was for about half the cost of the extra drilling that he had to come through, because of the tight construction here in MinDOT right-of-way and the county ditch, jurisdictional ditch number four, Culver. So, those add up, those three things add up to $29,696, so we're asking to get approval for that. We'll work with the private utility to try to get $10,000 of that back, but the rest would be part of the assessments.
Does anyone have questions?
I just have a question. So, is there no repercussions when you send that information out to the utilities and they don't respond? I mean, are they legally obligated to respond, or what do we do in that case, when you're ready to put something out forbidden, you don't have a response from one of them?
I think, I think if I research the question, I think the answer would be, they do have an obligation to respond. I don't know that there's any teeth to that, I don't know that the statute then also contains penalties for not responding. I know that it's always the leading problem in any, any project, especially if you have a big relocation. You might remember downtown, when they put in the light rail, they had to relocate all of XL's property, it was a big fight. So, I don't have a good answer, but I do know that they're legally required to respond.
To echo what Bill said, the yes, they're legally required, but there isn't any teeth to fine them, or, well, their option is to cut their line and see who comes out. We'd lose fiber to half of the Anoka County, so, in this case, it sounds like they're potentially, potentially wanting to work with us to reimburse the cost.
Okay.
And it's not uncommon. We're doing the same thing, doing our due diligence on Hornsby Street project, and with that design-build project, everybody's moving around, so there isn't good documentation, but we'll also survey it to the best of our knowledge. And what happens then is, when you actually physically go to do the construction, so we'll do the, we contact them when we're putting the plans together, and they don't respond. When it's actually time to construct, they'll do the go-for-one call, and then they'll physically come out and mark it, and by then, it's like, well, it's already been bid, now we see there's a conflict.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else, anything? If not, we need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve $29,696 for improvements, changes, order.
Do you want to read it?
No, I got it here. That's a good enough motion?
And do we have a second for that?
Works.
Anybody?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes.
Two other items that were added. One is a, you should have in front of you, I guess, A1, is a resolution for Hornsby Street, and this is just, I'll call it a formality. The street is, Hornsby Street North that we're designing, the new alignment, is going to be curbed and gutted in three lanes, center turn lane, two travel lanes, there's no place for parking, but this project, because it has state cooperative agreement money on 97, and local road improvement money on Hornsby Street, it's being designed to MinDOT standards, so they require a resolution. Just confirming that there'll be no parking on Hornsby Street north of 97, and that's what this resolution is for.
Would someone care to make that?
What's the resolution number?
1911.
So, I'll move to approve resolution 1911 to approve no parking on Hornsby Street north of Highway 97.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
And the last item is an update, you have some information in your packets, again, that were handed out. Let's see, the way it got included, A2 and A3, so I went to Anoka County Engineers Luncheon, they have almost once every, it's semi-annually. Anoka County gives an update on their projects, MinDOT gives an update on their projects. So, what you have in your packet is, A2 and A3 is just a flyer on the MinPass project, so on 35W, south of Columbus, but it has some information on the dates and the impacts. If you've been down that way, obviously, you know it started, and it's going to be a three-year project, so buckle up.
Three-year?
Three-year.
Notice the traffic doubled in front of my, in front of 90.
Yeah, there's more, you probably know there's more traffic on Lake Drive and Gallow River.
Yeah.
Because 35W is down to one lane northbound for six months, where they, when they do the flyover bridge. There's some information there for you, I won't go through it all right now. A4 and A5 was the Anoka County handout, and again, it's, the map shows all the different projects going on in... And again, it's, the map shows all the different projects going on in Anoka County, by Anoka County. You'll notice on the, kind of the narrative on A4, you see Columbus named there quite a bit, so they've got five projects going on in Columbus this year, and we've touched on those before. So nothing new with the schedules. One of them that doesn't show up, you don't see the word Columbus, but the pavement rehabilitation, that's a red line on the map. That's the Kettle River Boulevard north of Broadway. So that's part of a bigger pavement rehab project that comprises about seven or eight different roads. They're still intending that one to be a June-July timeframe. And lastly, A6 through A11 was a handout from MinDOT of projects they have going on in Anoka County and Ramsey County. Obviously, the design-build project with the bridge, the MinPass project, and there's some other projects, if you're interested, that they have going on around Anoka County. So again, just informational update. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Anybody?
That's all I had.
Thank you, Dennis. Now we're up to number 10, and we'll have the attorney's report with the policy direction for the umbrella house.
Mr. Mayor and Council, in the additions is a memo that we did. We previously discussed this with you, but we wanted to lay it out in a research memorandum because we had been approached as a city, probably going back maybe 18 months, for a group home with services in the freeway district. Ultimately, that project didn't go forward. And now the sponsors have found a single-family rental, and they would like to provide a group home with services for four to six adult women who are recovering from sex trafficking. And the way the laws work is if you're a licensed facility by the state, under a certain statute, you automatically are allowed in residential districts. If it's a single-family district, you can have six or fewer as a matter of right. If it's a multifamily district, you can have 12 or fewer in a group home as a matter of right, but you're licensed under a particular statute by the state. This facility is not. Another exception to prohibition is where you have disabilities. People with disabilities who live in a group home setting also are protected, that's under the Federal Fair Housing Act. This, and what I'm saying essentially is, if we had one of those two categories, the city would be required to allow them because they get essentially permitted as a matter of right pass in single-family neighborhoods. Because this doesn't have either of those two characters and therefore protections, you have a determination to make whether they would fit within the definition of a single-family home. And a single-family home is one where five or fewer unrelated persons live in kind of a housekeeping arrangement. So obviously, a single-family home can be a family, and then we don't have a limit on the number. But if it is not a family, if they're unrelated persons, the code provides for five or fewer living in a single housekeeping unit. Because this use has services 24/7, it doesn't fit kind of neatly within any of those categories. So the question to the council, and it's a policy question, is, A, do you feel like, based upon this discussion, that it's a, a single-family living arrangement, five unrelated persons, although they want to have up to six? Or do you feel that it is more akin to a group home with services and, which would require a code amendment if you wanted to go in that direction? So bottom line, it's my opinion as your city attorney that you have discretion to prohibit this use from the single-family district by simply saying it's not allowed because you're providing a group home with services. If you don't want to take that position, then the recommendation would be that you enact a code amendment, which would specifically allow it, but under certain conditions. So a conditional use permit would attach, or perhaps an interim use permit, so it doesn't carry forward when the property is sold. But that way, you could determine, just as you do with home occupations, how many vehicles can be on site? And, you know, what are the hours, and what about noise and other problems? So, you know, obviously, the proposers have been interested for some time in finding a location. There is a demand for this type of group home within the county. And so it's really up to you to give us some direction, how you want to proceed.
Do we know where else this organization may have similar homes? Do they, where else do they operate?
The other place that they have a home is in Wade Park. And I included in the agenda packet the code from Wade Park because they have a very similar facility there, although it doesn't have the same name. It's a similar, similar facility that they run.
But run by the same organization?
And in that particular case, in that, in that city, they, it's allowed in the commercial district, and they classify it as a group home.
It's my understanding this is a church-based organization. So it would be, it would be done on a kind of nonprofit charitable basis.
Was the property, when they buy, come off the tax roll, it'll still be on taxes?
You know, that's an interesting question. You know, so the property initially would be taxable. The question would be whether they would apply for tax exemption based upon being a charity. If they applied, it would likely be granted, if they're truly charitable. In other words, but if they're taking any kind of fee for service, then they, likely would not qualify as a charity. So that's a question that we can't answer tonight, but it's a possibility.
Do they have to notify the neighbors, or?
They would not have to notify the neighbors.
And we can require interim use permit?
You would have to amend the code to provide for either a conditional use permit or an interim use permit. And that process then would require notice to neighbors and give them an opportunity to be heard.
So if we just decide not to amend it, then the issue is?
It's done.
The moot point?
Right.
Because this, this was the same group that was over in the freeway district, correct?
Yes.
But it is expressly not allowed in a business district. I think that was put in there for financial reasons, because that's the most valuable property. But again, this would be taking a house off the tax roll. Or can you?
Possibly.
Can you write that into agreement that they cannot?
If they're a charity and they qualify for tax exemption, then it's not up to us. They make an application, I believe, with the county.
And the reason I look at it this way, we just spent two hours looking for borrowing millions of dollars. I hate to take another property off the tax roll. Everybody's on green acres, or senior hardship, or some sad story. And and they could go to another city, correct?
I think they, I would guess they have a very similar story when they go. I mean, it's hard to cite these things, particularly if they don't have one of the, one of the two protections under law. And the way we would likely write the group home, it wouldn't be directed to the type of user. It would be a group home with services, would require an interim use permit, perhaps, or you could decide a conditional use permit. I think the interim use permit's better because, you know, if someone goes away, if the use ends, then you don't have a permanent conditional use permit running with that property. So let's say you decide an interim use permit's the right way to go, then then you would, you would provide it for all group homes that provide services.
Did you say they would be renting this place?
Yes.
So as a renter, they couldn't, I mean, even if they are a 501(c)(3), I mean, wouldn't the owner of the property still have to pay taxes?
The owner would be getting rent and therefore would have to pay taxes.
So I mean, even if they were a charity, they couldn't take it off unless they purchased the property, correct?
Correct, yeah. So under this, under this arrangement, they would be paying, the owner would be paying taxes. If they bought it outright,
Right.
they could apply for an exemption.
Is there any risk? I mean, they're not licensed. I don't know what the licensing does. But, I mean, do we know how they fit in, in the other location? Are they not causing waves and being?
Well, I did not, I did not call Wade Park.
The reason, so what I was wondering is whether or not the licensing provides some better assurance of that than one that, and I don't know why they're not licensed if they don't meet the qualifications or they don't have the infrastructure to support that, I don't know.
They, that use, it's a, it's like sober housing, for instance, doesn't require a license. This particular type of group home doesn't require a license. So there's no license to obtain. So, and if you decide, I mean, you could decide, it doesn't fit, we're not going to allow it, end of discussion. We'll let the proposers know that. If you decide that you want more information, we could certainly ask them to come and make a presentation, answer your questions.
Are they required to have any security?
They have, they have 24/7 staff, so that's, you know, that's the type of security that would be, it would primarily be staffed. Do you mean like?
Well, situations could arise. That would be not good for the neighborhood. I was thinking like, security, security, but no.
Like fencing and cameras and things like that?
Yeah.
Those are the type of questions we could ask them to come prepared to answer. Again, if you want to entertain the proposal.
I would, I would ask Elizabeth, could we put this? Can we talk about this again at our next meeting? Put it on the agenda? We don't have to have an answer tonight, do we?
No, no. In fact, you know, based upon the, just receiving the memo, I think you should have some time to think about it.
Thank you.
And I think it would be good to have, I mean, if we're going to consider it, I think we need more information. So whether it's them coming and doing a presentation, or we get more information through, you know, research, or both.
Yeah, we can certainly put in a call to Wade Park and see how they're doing there.
Yeah.
The next thing would be the motion to amend the senior center lease agreement.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I believe Elizabeth and staff have been talking to, actually, some of you were involved in that discussion, the senior center folks. And to further that conversation, we just drafted a very simple amendment to the lease, which would make it month-to-month while the negotiations go on. This is on page 18, and we have one addition in the recitals, that landlord and tenant agree that it is in the best interest to continue the lease on a month-to-month basis until a longer-term renewal can be negotiated, and this is the ad, or the lease is terminated. So that's also a possibility, that they'll just simply terminate and walk away. So if you're comfortable with that ad, then the motion would be to, well, you've got the motion right in front of you.
So Mayor Pryner and I have been meeting with them, but I don't know how up to speed everybody else is on this. If we need to give a little background, maybe you? Was it about two weeks, three weeks ago, we were approached by the board of the senior center?
Because the lease was coming to an end.
Because the lease is coming to an end. They're also facing some financial difficulties with meeting the financial obligations that they had originally negotiated with the city in terms of paying a lease, paying for utilities, things like that. So they wanted to know if they could get more support for, for their organization from the city. And the challenge with that is they are organized as a 501(c)(3), so they're not just a club. They are a standalone legal entity, which, you know, that limits our ability to just say, oh, don't worry about paying for the lease, or don't worry about paying for the utilities, even if we'd like to do that. So we asked them to go back to their board to entertain the notion of maybe not being a standalone 501(c)(3) and potentially considering being a department of the city. And then we could think about how, how we could work with them. So today, we met with them, and they're amenable to that idea. They want to see some draft bylaws and some more detail of how that would work, and we would too. But they're, they're amenable to that idea. So as we work through that process, since their lease is expiring, we need to continue it on. But we don't want to do a one-year lease because we expect that in a few months, we'll have it figured out. So that's the reason for the month-to-month lease. And they seem very happy with the city's willingness to entertain other options with them. So it's been a good discussion. Anything else you want to?
Do you have any questions? Dennis? You could join, you know.
I was, I was listening. We had a problem with the, not a problem with the discussion, Elizabeth and I had a credit a few years ago, when they first became. They, they, they bad, only determined to be, stay where they are, I know that. And it's, they don't, what I know of, they don't have the financing. A month-by-month lease would be the way to go, and give them a chance to get their ducks in a row and after they can.
So would someone like to make the motion?
I'll do it, since it's near and dear to my heart. So I would move to approve the first amendment to the senior center lease agreement with the change to add or the lease terminated after negotiated.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Our next issue is the Mini-Mobile fence height change.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm going to start this, but Elizabeth will probably have to provide detail. We are proposing for your consideration a corrected conditional use permit. Now, this is a fairly unusual device for fixing the record on conditions. Normally, if a condition truly changes, they'd have to go back, you know, they'd have to apply for an amendment, go back through the process, go back to the planning commission, and then come back here. And since this was more of a misunderstanding, in fact, I think they presented a 10-foot fence at the planning commission, and it got written in as a 6-foot fence in the conditions. We felt it was appropriate to just correct the record by filing a corrected conditional use permit and not requiring them to go back through the lengthy process. So that's the kind of legal setup, but Elizabeth can give you the details.
So, you know, there's a handout in, in your place that outlines the minutes from the council meeting. And we did go back, Mini-Mobile came in and asked if they could build a 10-foot fence. And when I had a discussion with the manager, I said, well, do you currently have a 10-foot fence? And he said, yes, the 10-foot fence was built around the containers. And I said, okay. And I said, well, as long as your conditional use permit identifies a 10-foot fence, then you're able to build it. Well, I asked Ben to look in the record, and he said, in the public hearing, the manager said, we're going to build a 10-foot fence. In the site plan, it shows a 6-foot fence. So the planner put a 6-foot fence in the findings, and no one caught that they had presented a 10-foot fence in the public hearing. And so after looking at it all, we felt, and that's when I called Bill's office and said, what's the procedure for this? They clearly intended to put the 10-foot fence up. They actually built the 10-foot fence. And really, why he was coming in is they want to build a security fence to continue around their buildings, put in a gate. And they did not want to go from a 10-foot to a 6-foot fence. And so we wanted to be able to correct the record for that. So what I'm presenting is on number 15, which is the findings, it would say the expanded storage area will be surrounded with a 10-foot-high security fencing. And then condition 13 would read, storage containers may be stacked to a maximum height of two containers and will be enclosed with a 10, with 10-foot fencing. 10-foot fencing will extend around the buildings and parking areas for security purposes. And that would, and that does reflect the intent of the discussion during the planning commission hearing.
So would someone like to make that motion, please? So would someone like to make that motion, please?
Motion to, to move to, to approve the corrected conditional use permit for the mobile mini at 13733 Lake Drive, as indicated on the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. The next thing will be the mayor and city council members' report. Danny.
I have nothing.
Janet.
Is this what I'm supposed to talk about, the petting zoo?
This is it.
I might, I might want to defer to you, Shelley. So Shelley and I serve on the Fall Fest Committee, and so we've been trying to come up with some new ideas that the community would like. And after having attended Blue Heron Days last year, we noticed that they had a petting zoo that people loved, and so we looked into it for our community, and it would be funded by donations, it would not come out of the general fund or city coffers. So we have the same vendor that provided this to Lino, and, but they have a statement in their lease that I think we feel needs to have an attorney say how it should be amended, or about liability. Should somebody not follow their rules and do something against their stated safety policies and then get hurt or killed, trampled by a llama?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I did take a look at this, and this, typically in a vendor contract, the vendor gets insurance, the vendor indemnifies you, not the other way around. Here, you're basically saying, we take all, on all the responsibility if someone gets bitten, or, you know, worse. You know, there might be a middle ground where there's mutual indemnification, but this would be difficult language for you to sign. I mean, it says if somebody gets injured or dies, you know, so, you know, that's a pretty, and, and of course, you don't expect that, not in a petting zoo, but-
Well, so my question to you is, it, but it also calls out in the, in the situation where the person violated this, the posted safety. So to me, it sounded like their liability insurance covers, you know, you put your hand down to pet them and get bit. They, they would not expect us to cover that. It would be if you have, you know, some little person or big person crawling over the fence and falling in and getting trampled by a llama, that this would probably fall into. And at least from what we saw, I mean, they have people posted all around, so I think the likelihood of it is really unlikely. But that said, if it happened, it would be on our shoulders. So I don't know what the options are of amending that.
Yeah, and-
Just to put it in context.
Yeah, and Elizabeth looked into our league coverage, and we can't get a league rider for this. So we do want to make sure that there's some insurance, somebody's insurance is covering the day. And I think perhaps, you know, start with a conversation rather than send over a red line.
Yeah.
You know, just to see what's doable, have other cities push back, and, you know, what, what's the middle ground.
Yeah, okay.
Have you talked to him?
No.
In the beginning, though, to-
No, actually, Lori did. We gave him the contact information, and Lori did the talking with him and got the-
So who gets to call them back and tell them? Ask them what's, what's doable and what's not?
Well, I think the question is, you know, what are, what, this is problematic language, and what have other, what have you accepted as amendments from other cities to start with?
Do you want to do it, or does Lori have to do it, or?
I, I can do it if you want me to, I don't know.
What's, what's the protocol?
You know, Lori's been dealing with them, so, you know, why don't we have her call and see if they have something in the alternative that Bill can look at? And if that works, then we'll, we'll, you know, go with that. And if, if you want to delegate that to the staff and the attorney review, then most of, we'll sign the contract.
I mean, I guess the other thing to think about, too, is we also agreed, Shelley and I, that we would be stationed over there, so we could pull any wayward toddlers off of the fence if we had to. But I still get that the language is problematic. I just think it's going to be like a really unusual, almost couldn't happen based on what we, how we saw them operating in Lino.
And I have to believe that, you know, this is their standard language, and it, and it, a city in particular would push back on this. Maybe somebody else, maybe a shop owner wouldn't, but-
Yeah, yeah, right.
I think that most municipalities would find that a little overreaching.
You could, you could also have Lori let them know that we do plan to be there, too, whether that makes them feel any better about trying to amend that language.
That it be monitored, okay.
With a shotgun.
Cattle prod. You toddler, off that fence.
Well, you just don't want somebody to get kicked in the head and-
Or, yeah, it could be bad.
Well, and, and maybe we start with the alternative languages, we just want to strike that paragraph.
Yeah.
We'll sign it, but we want to strike the paragraph. See if that flies.
Yep, okay.
All right, anything else?
So we need to make a motion to direct staff to do that. Is that what you'd like?
I guess so.
So I'll move to direct staff to amend the Fall Fest petting zoo contract to address the liability issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And Mr. Mayor, if we don't feel we can address it, we'll bring it back here to let you know.
I just had a question, speaking of fences. And can you tell me what that fence is going to be on, on Lake Drive? Down there, the eight-foot fence with barbed wire at the top, just goes around, nothing?
Yes, we can, or perhaps we can. Elizabeth and I met with-
Warren Stoker.
Warren Stoker? Who bought that piece of property and owns it? What he envisions, and we just had a little listening session, was putting in something similar to the man caves, except it's not for personal peoples, cars and things, it'd be for businesses. So if you had an electrical shop, you could have him build you a building, and it can be any size, 30 by 50, or 100 by 50, or 200 by 50. And you would own it, but you would be a part of his association. He also has a roofing company, and several other things, of which he would build himself a new building there. So that would be his headquarters, plus, he said he really envisions it being very similar to the, to the man caves. So everybody pays a monthly fee. He does the snow plowing, he does the gardening, he does the fencing, keeps everything out. And he had quite a few plans. He seemed to be quite sincere, and he seemed to be able to carry the project through.
It was, it was, and he wanted to be, to be more contractor-based, you know, for people to be able to, the front would be more of an office, and the back where they would build, bring in their truck from, whether it was an electrician, you know, plumber, but that's, he was gearing it more to contractors.
How many acres does he have there?
Didn't he say about 22?
22, I think he said. So-
The whole thing is fenced?
Put in a lot of fence.
He did.
And he realized he may have to move some for elevation issues and all that, but he's in those type of businesses. So he seemed to understand what he was, he knew what he, knew what he wanted, and he seemed to be able to make it happen. So we thought it was a productive meeting. He already bought the property.
How long ago did you meet?
Last Wednesday, or Thursday, or Friday.
Last Thursday we met with him.
So, so yes, so nothing is for sure yet, but it looks optimistic, and that'd be a good addition to to the city, I think, and good tax base.
Why did he put up a fence before he built anything?
He didn't ask for that, because he knows-
He wanted to secure the property. He wanted to show people that, that the property was going to be maintained and cared for. But he spent a lot of money on fence. And he knows, he knows he has to move it, too.
Yeah, that's almost $100,000 in fence. But he, yeah, that was the answer he gave. He wanted the prospective people he has been dealing with and talking to, and since he's in the trades, he knows several people who might avail to go there. And he said if he, if they saw that it was secure and straight and clean and decent, that would help his future sales. So, but we'll see.
So he won't be planting anything this year?
No, gonna plant blacktop.
Good luck.
So it's on the green acres, that's good?
Potentially, yes.
So, anybody else, Shelley? Didn't you go to any meetings or anything?
No, I did hear back from Ham Lake, I, you had the video of their council. Ham Lake's the one that's holding us up with the budget, with-
Sunrise.
Watershed District. And I think that they have resolved the fact that they have to stay in those watershed districts, but it may benefit us, again, as I said last time, that the percentage that we pay will not be as straight, 25% for the operating costs. It would go down to like 13. So we benefit from it, Linwood does not, and, and I think-
So, yeah, they want to amend the joint powers agreement to, to change how the, and I don't know what the process is for doing that, you know what that is.
Well, they're sending everything back to the communities, right?
Yep, the joint powers agreements have to go to each community, and, and this has, I'm assuming this has to do with the admin fees that we all pay a quarter of, and they want it to be broken down, just like the operational fees.
Yes.
Which would go down to 13%, which is, you know, we're one of the winners in this particular thing, so.
But if one community who will not be a winner says no, is that, then what happens? Is it by a majority rule?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think you have to have everybody, I think it's-
Majority?
Two-thirds, maybe.
How many member, is it, are there six members on that board?
Which, 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 which board?
For Sunrise.
Sunrise.
There's two from, well, there was only one from Columbus. Two from every other city, there were, when I was on it.
So there's, so there's eight now?
Yeah.
So, so you potentially get an even vote there. But aren't you going to have two communities say one way and two communities say the other way?
Not really, because I, I know Linwood was going to roll over, because they're getting most of the dollars.
Oh, were they?
You know, so they didn't sound like they were-
Most, most of the watershed work gets done in Linwood, because it's a big share of it.
And they want it, I mean, they're the ones that are doing the carp thing, so.
You don't like the carp thing?
I don't like the carp.
I have only one thing to add. I have to commend the park board for making a good decision, and I sought in action. They decided they didn't want to put signs, fountains, trees, or anything on the roundabouts, except grass. And it turns out that's a good idea, twice now. But on Saturday morning, about 5:30, I was getting gas at Holiday, and all of a sudden, there was a big kaboom. So everybody came running out of the building to see what blew up, but it wasn't. Somebody had decided to go through the roundabout instead of round-a-roundabout.
Again.
Ended up hitting a big sign that says roundabout, and all the flashing yellow lights on the tripod, or the, whatever they're called. So anyway, some guy ran out there and dragged the fellow out of the car. He was all right, I guess, and so I took off to go do what I was doing, and all this stuff was laying on the road, so I had to clear the road just to get around the roundabout again. So anyway, I think it was a good thing to leave it, at least for now, because whatever would have been there would have been destroyed.
Not once but twice.
The front one wheel was off his car, the hood was pushed back to the windshield, and the radiator was halfway laying out. So that was the excitement early Saturday morning. So anyway, I think that's a good one. I think Jim agrees. Just leave it at grass, you can mow it, throw the spare parts out in the ditch.
So, the last thing we have is a public works report. You're up, you're on.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I have a request. Last fall, we were granted the opportunity to replace a dump truck, and a truck that we were going to replace was part of that motion. The reason that, so we have the two older trucks, one is a 2006 Sterling, and the one that I'm looking to replace tonight would be the 2001. We opted to do the 2006 Sterling last year because it had an electrical demon that nobody could figure out, and it wasn't reliable. So, over the period of October, September of last year, we've figured out what that problem is, and we fixed it. So now that truck is a reliable vehicle, and it's five years newer than the one that we would have replaced. So I'm here tonight to ask if we can switch the replacement of the '06 for the '01, if that makes sense.
Perfect sense.
So I do need a motion for that, and I don't know if you wrote a motion on the-
I did, I think, I did.
Yep.
Anyone have any discussion on the issue?
Well, if you didn't have to replace the '01, you thought the '06 should be replaced, and now it doesn't need to replace.
So I wasn't gonna, I would have replaced the '01, but the '06 had an electrical problem that had left us stranded multiple times.
I understand that.
So, so that wasn't reliable at that point, so my thought was, is let's just get rid of that, because it's not-
Yep, I get that.
Doesn't do us any good. So we fixed that.
Yep, so now let's replace the '01, you're saying?
And now, so, we were going to trade in the '06 at that point. So now, rather than trade in a newer truck, I would rather trade in the older truck, is my intent.
Single axle?
The '01 is the tandem. The '06 is a single axle.
And you want to replace it with a more expensive truck than replace an '06?
No, I'm buying the same truck.
Okay.
So I've just, it's just my trade-in that I'm switching out. So the, the truck that I ordered is the truck that I ordered, that's not changing. It's just the trade-in is changing. So I would rather have kept the '06 last year, but with the demons that it had, you know, it wasn't reliable. So now we fixed it, and I would rather keep that one, so now I'm asking to switch.
Anyone else, Shelley?
If he made a decision, I, I'd say we should go with it, because he, he knows the equipment.
And we're basically buying five more years, four more years, five more years?
Yep, five more years.
How much less is the trade-in value of the '01 from the '06?
Uh, $20,000.
So it's just $20,000 more that we have to pay for the new truck?
Yep. But in another five years, you know what I mean, this one would be worth nothing. So, I mean, it, it's kind of a six to one, half a thousand with the other at that point, I guess.
What's the usual lifespan on these things? I mean, is it usual, the, I mean, this one's what, 18 years old? It's a long time.
So a handful of councils ago made the, they, they came up with a schedule, and the dump truck schedule is 12 years.
Okay, so '01 has exceeded that.
As prior, we only had two trucks. And what, two, three, three years ago, I think, we just, we opted to keep. So we bought a new one, and then kept the '01 at that point as our third truck.
Backup.
As a backup, or, you know, we use it at this point. So you ultimately get done plowing probably two hours faster by running three trucks.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the trade, trade the 2001 Sterling truck in lieu of the 2006 Sterling truck for purchase of a new Mack truck.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Where's the, where's the $20,000, where's that coming from? Where's the $20,000 coming from?
The equipment fund. So I mean, when I do the budget, the trade-in, I, I don't want to say it's a bonus, but I budget off of the value that we're going to pay for a vehicle, you know what I mean? So if we trade in, that number just brings that down, but I use that full price as the budgeting number.
All right, changing the subject, is the 150, is the bid over with? The bid for the 150?
No, it did not, it didn't get put in the paper right away, so I believe that it goes in Friday.
Um, it went in, tomorrow.
Goes in tomorrow. So that'll go in tomorrow, and then it'll be in for, I don't know how long it's going to run for, I guess.
Last meeting, we said that we would open bids at the, even 12th meeting, and bids, so bids, bids close at 4 o'clock on the 11th.
Public Information Coordinator's report.
No report.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. City administrators report.
I have two items tonight on my report, the first of which is in the additions, but kind of a continuation of our discussion at the workshop in looking at the city's bonding. So looking at, in our- So looking at, in our additions on A22. A22 represents a kind of a cash forecast that I use, looking at end of year and where I have some either shortfalls or overages for cash as far as my 105% of 2019 payments. And so, in this case, it does list all the bonds that we have currently, and what my debt payments are for 2019. We would have normally done this two months ago, but we're a little behind in our audit, and so, or, yeah. Audit is normally done now, we would have been doing audit two months ago, but again, just a bit behind. And so, looking at the analysis, because this will be physical, this would be fiscal year ending 2018. If you look at the, the column on the right-hand side, you'll see that our bond funds are in pretty good shape after 2019, with fund balances. With the exception of our 2018A, and we have a shortfall of 177,030.99. And so, I'm, in the memo on page A21, I'm recommending a transfer of cash from the general fund, which is 100, to the 308, not the 208. For the geo bonding, for the refund and special assessment bond. Each bond has a fund, so it's a 2018A bond, but each bond has its own fund, and it happens to be 308, not 208. In this particular case. And they would be effective for fiscal year ending 12/31/18. The other thing I wanted to show you, just so that you know when I'm projecting cash, if you look at the memo on A23, this is the memo that I brought to you in January of 2019, on how to allocate funds for the, from the land sale. So if you look at the tax abatement, the 2015, and you look at the cash flow projected, it takes into account that transfer. So you have 619,000 for 1884. If I didn't put the 600,000 in there, I'd only have 19,000, and I would have had a shortfall of 225,000. So you can see how, you know what I mean, there are things that can change. You know what I mean, depending on what goes on with land sales, or prepayments, or other things that might happen during the year. So in this case, I didn't have to put any money into the 360 fund, it was the 308 fund that was, was short. So with that, on A21 is the proposed motion for the cash transfer.
Would someone like to make the motion?
Motion to move, move to approve the transfer of cash balance of 177,100 from general fund 100 to 308 Go Refunding and Special Assessment Bond Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The reason why I'm moving out of the general fund is, so in the primary level, when we do the preliminary levy, I have somewhat of a good cash flow. But it's only nine months' worth of information. So if a prepayment came in before, I have a pretty good feel of it. If no prepayments came in, then it's kind of hit or miss by December. And so what I have to do in the general fund, in the general fund, I have what they call debt reserve fund. And depending on where I, I look at it and see where we are in cash flow, that can elevate either from 200, 240, 280. It's been up to 320. I just have to, you know what I mean, we do projections, and then the council determines, okay, that's the number we're gonna, we're gonna levy. That's where I take the, that line item is where the shortfall comes out of. So it's in, sitting in the general fund, comes out of the general fund, goes to debt service. If I don't use it for debt service, then you have the ability to do other things with it, or it just goes back into reserves. So it gives me, it gives us the flexibility to do that when we have shortfalls.
Would you repeat for me, please, Elizabeth? So why is there a shortfall? Because of green acres and?
There's a lot of different, you know what I mean, a lot of different reasons why you can have a shortfall, but yes, it could be, you know, people didn't pay their assessments, they didn't pay their taxes. They didn't, you know what I mean, that we just didn't collect them. It could be that deferrals, you know what I mean, which we've seen in green acres and special assessments. It could also be that, in this particular case, I, we didn't collect yet. You know, so I'm one year, one year behind because projects started in one year, we didn't, we didn't collect in one year. So we have to collect in another year. So when that happens, you usually end up catching up in a bond fund. So it, it, sometimes it's just plain old cash flow.
So this is the money in the general fund that we've just transferred? So that's basically just a cushion.
Yep.
To keep, so you don't have to go knock on the doors and ask people to pony up the extra money.
Well.
That's why.
Otherwise, you know what I mean, if we didn't, if we didn't, I know there's generally, I generally can tell whether there is gonna be a shortfall. And we've had a shortfall for 10 years in any given bond fund for any different reasons. And so, we created this fund in the general fund. And it sits in the general fund, because when you dedicate and you levy for a bond fund, it has to go into the bond fund. If you levy it in the general fund, you have discretion. And so I levy it in the bond fund, because then you just made a choice to move it. If you, if you levied it for debt service, it has to go into that fund. So, it gives you the opportunity, and then it gives the flexibility, what if we did get a prepayment? Or, I mean, what if you are able to not levy at all, or not move any money, then, then it'll sit in the general fund.
Thank you. And move on to your July 5th issue.
The July 4th lands on a Thursday this year, which is, which is a holiday. And city staff is requesting that we close the offices on Friday. And it wouldn't be a holiday, it would just be either no pay, vacation, or, or they would have to take comp time.
So the 4th is on?
A Fri- Thursday.
Thursday.
And we'd like to close the offices on July 5th.
Gets the 4th of July off. And then you would like to also be able to not open the offices on the 5th, Friday? So they could have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes.
Motion to approve to close the city offices, July 5th?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Well, now we're on to, anything else?
I have one other question with the workshop. Next steps. So, we had two presentations, one, the first one was an opportunity in the residential district for a wedding business. And the second was our bonds presentation. So I'm looking for direction on next steps and follow-up with, or if any, for, for both of those presentations.
I, I believe there are several points to discuss regarding the.
Event Center.
The what?
The Event Center.
Event Center, that's it.
So is that, like, a next agenda, next council agenda item, is that when?
I believe so.
Have they submitted anything? So they've not submitted a application for an IUP yet?
No.
Nope, this was just a first shot.
I don't understand how we're discussing anything more until we get more information. I mean, they haven't talked about sanitary facilities, or.
I think the, I think the threshold question is, could this be processed as a residential-based business under an interim use permit? My observation is it kind of stretches that definition, but, you know, you're the ultimate decision-maker. If you agree that it stretches the definition, then we would either be looking at a code amendment to specifically allow it, or if you, upon further reflection, it doesn't have to be tonight, decide, no, it just doesn't fit. We would tell them, no, it doesn't fit. A little like wrestling with the umbrella house. Does it fit in the first place, and if it doesn't, are you willing to make an amendment to fit it in under some sort of performance standards?
You know, I wish there was a third option between an IUP and a CUP, because the way we define an IUP, very few of what we approve fits. Right, they're not temporary, they're not small. And I, and I, it bothers me that we have this definition that almost none of them fit into. But we, we don't have another option or another tool other than a CUP, which, you know, doesn't fit either. So, is there, is there any other permitting option?
Well, planned unit development, but we use that usually for density.
Right, yeah.
Well, actually, we don't use it for density, we use it for.
Multi.
Laying it out. But I think one of the ways to think about this is, the advantage of using interim use permit is if it doesn't work out, you can pull their permit. But now they've spent a lot of money improving property. So the other way to do it is to have the conditional use permit, you know, really stand in for the IUP, so that it has really strict noise standards. And it has parking standards and lighting standards, so that if you ever had to revoke, you'd have grounds to revoke. You know, so I, I can think of one time, maybe, that we went through a revocation proceeding here. And it was tough, but we, I think we were successful, is my recollection. That, that gives the landowner something to go to the bank with, it's not temporary. And it's not this kind of artifice that it is temporary. But then you have very detailed conditions and performance standards.
But then you also have to amend the zoning, right?
You do.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think that's where he really needs direction, because if he applies for, you don't want him to apply for residential zone business and then turn around and say, well, that's not the right permit. Then we gave him the wrong information, so. So I realize you might want more information, but do you really want, the only application right now that I can, and Bill says it really doesn't fit, is the residential zone business, or like the annual event license, but you said that really didn't, didn't fit either.
That's more of a, that truly is temporary, that's, you know, snow days, or, you know, something that's, that's gonna be gone after the weekend. And this, this is really, I mean, this should, in my view, this should take a little more thought, because it's a pretty significant investment on their part. And, and yet, you could have all sorts of problems if you don't tie it down. One of the things that I was thinking about as they were presenting is, well, they've got a lot of acres, and they've got, you know, buffer areas, but not everybody who comes in for this type of use would. And so is that a requirement, you know?
Well, I also think about the people who, you know, have residences and bought in a residential area, not in a area that we may decide to change the zoning into, and I don't like the idea of doing that for a single purpose application.
Yeah, if you're next to the fairgrounds, you know you're next to the fairground.
Right, right, you buy it knowing that that's what's next door, but that's not what these people in those five houses, or six houses, whatever it is, bargained for. And that bothers me too, so, I don't know, I think we need to think about this more.
And, and I know what the, you know, the current property owners are gonna say, and they're gonna say, well, dual kennels have been there for 20 years, which is a commercial kennel. So, you have that other side too.
Right, but those people with the properties next to it knew that they were there when they decided to build there. So, to me, that's a different argument.
Good arguments. Because that will, that will dramatically change that neighborhood, as bad as the yapping dogs are. And do we? What we must consider is how much damage can we do to somebody else to let somebody else's dream come through? And I never thought of this, but think of the lights. So they're gonna have to light their whole parking lot, light the building, have lights for the wedding, lights for whatever they do.
Right, it's a.
There's traffic control, if you got 125 to, you know, 150 cars going in for a wedding, or whatever, and then coming out.
Well, it's not dissimilar to John's black dirt thing. When old John had one dump truck load a week, there was no issue. When you put 100 belly dumps a day, then it became an issue. So if somebody drops off their dog at 9:00 in the morning, and he barks till 5:00, and then he goes home, that's no problem. Or, it's one problem, but it's manageable. When you have 200 or 300 party revelers, and a wedding is a party, that creates a little different, a little bit different dynamic.
So you're saying we have to find a pathway, like the IUP or the CUP, before they actually give us, you know, concrete things that they're going to be doing with this property? I mean, when I say concrete, I'm talking about all the things that we talk about with the water, and the, and the sanitary stuff, and the, I, the insect thing is a big deal. I mean, they were kind of making light of it, but I know that at a venue we were at, they ended up having to have, like, the mosquito control people come through, because, you know, it was a real problem.
And generally, people don't want to spend a whole lot of money, you know what I mean, if they know that, they'll, they'll go down this road if they know that they, they feel that they're gonna get approval. But they, you know, they don't want to spend a whole lot of money if it, if everyone thinks it's not a good idea, and it's, and it's not, it's not gonna work.
You could, you could certainly take the position that, you know, we've looked at it, it doesn't fit the residential zone business. If you'd like to propose a code amendment, you know, that's on you, that's your risk. And, and they may just walk away and say, we, we don't want to, you know, spend the summer on a code amendment to find out that it's not gonna happen. So that's certainly one option, and we could say, you know, A, the council doesn't feel like it fits the current code, but if you want to entertain a code amendment, you can certainly do that. And then it's all on them, and then you would, you just wait to see what it looks like when it hits your desk. Or you, or you can signal that.
You wait long enough, Bill always comes up with the answer. I think that's a good idea.
You like that one?
I'd like to, yeah, the code amendment, that puts, puts it on them.
Probably nobody's for it, we should say, or if the majority is against it, we should say so, and, or for.
I think it's a beautiful thing, but the, the land there is not going to support what they want to do. I know that land. It, it's marsh and filled in, and they're gonna have to redo some trenchings, I'm taking, to make the building, even the parking lot, stay above water. I go past that place every day, twice, and the ponds are, here's the grass, here's the ponds, about it, they're full. And I had a buddy of mine that went back and looked at the land one time, drove out back, and he was worrying about mosquitoes. He was afraid he wasn't gonna get out of there, they were so thick.
Well, I would say let's all think about it.
Yeah.
Put it, put it on the agenda maybe for some discussion in the next meeting.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of serious issues, and no matter what you do, you're gonna change that.
Well, I guess the other, the other thing I was thinking as they were presenting it, kind of along what you just said, is like, I just don't think this area can support. I mean, in terms of the number of people that would want to rent a facility like that. And so then the idea of changing code and doing all that, and then having it not be successful anyway, bothers me as well. I just can't imagine they're gonna get, you know, targeting a, a sort of more elite group of people and, or organizations, and the number that they think they're gonna need to make this a go, I, I'm skeptical that this area would draw that, as beautiful as their vision is. So, so that's the other thing, is like, you know, how much do you try to change things to make it fit? And then, I just don't, I, I don't see any feasibility study or anything that makes me believe that they can even do this. This is more like their, their vision.
We had a racetrack proposal some years ago, and we did put all the onus on the proposers. We just said, you know, prove that this is enough land, prove that you can get LINO involved, prove, you know, we're, we're happy to entertain it, but we're not gonna do the work for you. And, and eventually they went away, but, so, you know.
Yeah.
Alright. So announcements and reminders, the city council workshop, oh, we already had that.
Well, did you, I'm sorry, did you need a direction on the bonding thing, next steps?
I was just gonna say, oh, and is there, is there something else you'd like from Tammy, or is that good, just going into, to budget? Did you feel like you got enough from her to get a good feel of when we go to budget? You know, when we're doing that, those line items, or is there something else you wanted to see from her? I know Horns. I know Hornsby Street, we have a lot to talk about. So, she will come back with Hornsby Street, and I think that's, I would put that on the next agenda, more detail about that, so we know next steps for the Hornsby Street project. I think we'll have, that will also have to be put into, to budget. But anything else you, resources you need from her?
I kinda hope to have more of an idea, like just black and white, you know, this is where we're at on this particular bond, this is where we're at, you know. Now, maybe the, the resources you quoted, I can go in and figure it out. But I kinda hope that, you know, we would know exactly what's being paid back and what's not, and where we're at in the, in the process of everything. I just, I, I see the bonds, you know, I hear about the bonds, and, and then when we have to sign the bills and everything, I'm thinking, okay, is this one is reimbursable? Or this is what, you know what I'm saying? I just don't feel comfortable. Do you, as far as where we are on all the bonds?
Uh, I've never come to a bond.
So, what you, are you asking to have each one broken out, what it was, and then how much has been paid out?
Yeah, yeah, I kinda...
And how much is left?
Yeah. Because the thing is, is okay, you've got all the little bar graphs and all the little, you know, circles and everything, but the problem is, is that we're adding to them, you know?
Um, you know, every time, yeah, you...
And then Hornsby will be adding to them. And I'm like, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you said, you know, we're growing up here, and, and in two years, you know, we're just gonna start going down, but if you shove, you know, some other stuff in there, no. And we're not gonna be coming down. And I am concerned about the fact that, you know, when we had that big chunk for buying the land, you know, that, that was something that had to be kinda choked, you know, for the, for the next few years and everything, and I just don't wanna get in a situation where that was like three million dollars, and Hornsby could possibly be two point two million dollars.
Two point two, yeah. That's gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
I think, and I think the schedule, too, showed the, you know, the life of the, of the bond instead of what you anticipated, pay, what you thought you might pay off when the call date came due. So, I think it might be helpful to see that projection. I mean, you know, if you know that you're gonna pay eight years into it instead of twenty years from now, then it helps clarify for you, I think, what, how much debt is overhanging the city's head. And knowing that your intent to pay off at the call date isn't necessarily a hundred percent, but that's what you're budgeting and what you're planning on. That was, that was the part that I didn't, she wasn't showing those. She was just showing the, what the lifespan of the bonds were.
Well, we know what the call date is for the, for the land, we know what the call date is, but we don't, unfortunately, we don't have, we don't know how quickly it's gonna sell. So, that's kind of the, that's, that's the unknown. So, when you do have a, a land sale, that's when you have to figure out what the allocation is gonna be, and then you start to look at the, then you start to look at the numbers. How much do I have to put away? How much do I pay back the, the, the general fund? Because without the, without the proceeds from the land, you can't pay the bonds. So, it's kind of a, it is kind of a balancing of funds, so...
But even just couching it in what you think might happen, or how likely it might happen, I think would help clarify...
Okay.
What, what Shelley's getting at.
We, we can do projections, we can do projections on a yearly basis. I don't know that I have it cumulative over fifteen years. So, it's on a yearly basis, we have the numbers.
So, would you like to see assessments also on the sewer and water and those kind of things? Or just...
Sometimes when we're talking about something, it's like, it's hard for me to sort in my head, like, what is actually gonna be paid back, you know, and, and, you know, in the, in the future versus...
Um, how about when we, when we go over the eighteen budget, 'cause that's the next workshop? I'll pull out the, the payment schedules. Maybe that'll be...
Yeah.
Maybe that would help a little bit. You know what I mean? And you can see the principal interest, and you can see more of the tables that I use for, for payments. Maybe that would help. Alright.
So, next Wednesday is the fifth Wednesday of the month, so there's not a planning commission or a city council meeting, but we all have to go to the Anoka, whatever that is, at the Bunker Hill.
Local government meeting.
So, I guess we'll see everybody there. Anybody have anything else to offer? Anybody from the congregation? Then the meeting's closed.
Okay.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I don't know what I did though, but it went...